So what's my little buddy been up to? I haven't seen him for ever.
I know, yeah. Um, asking everyone and their mom when they're getting their combine though. Literally, that's the only question that comes out of his mouth these days. We saw Andy at the fair this weekend. He was, Andy was trying to pay attention to all the kids around him. His big truck and trucks on trailer through everyone else. Greg just removed. Why don't we get in the combine now?
All consuming right now.
I ask his preschool teacher every day when they're getting their combine.
I guess I wouldn't be able to answer that one.
Cause you're the younger of us.
He's like three year old preschool, so he has this arch, but she's, that was with Johnny in Florida.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So she's, uh, he has this whole hat mounted his reading hall. He's so excited. He loves, he loves his arch and he loves his curtain.
What's this two thousand three hundred thirty one?
Ran into it on the fair and everything.
SW Supplies?
SW Supplies.
Was it like one big thing or?
Ran his, uh, formula into a tree last weekend. It's funny.
They had to get some.
They got stitches.
That drugs.
Truck's taking care of it.
We started our loyalty punch part of the yard.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Hopefully ten visitors free or something, I don't know.
So I could move it to PD, but I'm waiting to see where his capital stays. Cause we don't have this one decorated yet.
Stanley Griner.
So we're paying for the year.
Oh, there's a car. Breaking away, you know, going to the ER, he's like, God. I think he's gonna walk and talk in the time of, no, it's gonna happen, you don't know exactly what's gonna happen.
You sit back and watch it, yeah.
All the screaming in the hour of the world, ain't nothing, so you might as well just get used to it.
Good days and bad days.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, I feel like that's pretty standard.
Well, that's, I was half tempted to be like, you know what?
My response should be.
He gets so intact, he feels like he's. And I know.
Those aren't two pages.
Kinda sucks for your normal tissue to pull together, but you've had two years of surgery last week. And from twenty months. And as someone who knows how to suture, and he would insult you not being able to do something. Yeah, you should have very costly to not be able to do it myself. He got out for a while.
Yes.
It just turned out like a.
Have it turn alright?
We're gonna wait again. Well, I picked him up Tuesday, Sunday.
I had one person ask us, so then I thought, well.
We got, we got three of them. The bottom wheel back corner and two things fit his upper, and then twenty nose and everything stucked out all up. And give him the. I said, yes.
Alex, are you joining us?
I will, but I guess I'm not gonna make you happy.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, your attention, we're going to open our meeting.
My phone flashlight.
Again, dinner, you need to approve. Citizens' opportunity to address the council.
I don't have anything to say. I just have a question that I know you guys can't answer, but I want you guys to kinda think about it. Um, I've had a couple people ask me about the complaint process. Um, for citizens that have complaints and wanting to file formal complaints. Um, making sure that those complaints are getting relayed to you guys and, um, what the follow-up process on those are like. Um, I couldn't find out a lot of, I couldn't find a whole lot of information from the, uh, copy of the code that I have access to. Um, as far as like a policy for that or anything. So wanted to just kinda put that on your guys' radar to address if you can, essentially.
During the same, and I will proceed. Uh, consent agenda approved in previous minutes and approves bill.
Make a motion. Approve this consent agenda.
The bills are on.
Move in second to approve the consent agenda composed of the previous minutes and bills. On favor. Uh, close. Okay. We're going to have a presentation now on the wastewater project. We go from water to wastewater.
I know, back and forth, back and forth. I think he's gonna tell us, he's already talked to a couple contractors.
Hello, hello.
Hey Ben.
Hello, hello. How are we today? Can you hear me? Can you do it all by time language?
Yeah.
If that works. Can you hear me alright?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. So it won't be long for me today. I've got, we're getting here toward the end of all this. So our last proposal should be in by the end of the week. That's what we need to go forward with USDA for that search grant. That's what's gonna pay for that preliminary engineering report where they go through and camera everything. Things, it's been seven, eight years now. We should do that again. We've got a few stragglers hanging out for the interviews that I've been going through for all three of these engineering companies. Um, I've got interview questions for the subcommittee. When we, whoever decides to come along for those three interviews with the firms. Um, and then I'll put together those review packets so that whoever decides to come along with me to those interviews can take a look at kinda the Google review session that I've put together. Um, and then we can get those scheduled with those interviews for the engineers. Did you guys have a chance to figure out who might wanna sit on, in on those?
Do we know when these might happen, Ben?
Um, I can probably get everything turned around in terms of the review summary and the interview questions. I'd kinda like to put that in front of whoever. I can get that turned around Thursday or Friday of this week. And then it'll just be kinda up to you guys on how long you wanna sit on that and review it before going into those. But I'd say they could be early as next week, toward the end of the week.
Okay. Yep. We will figure out a couple people for you, Ben.
Great. That sounds good. Really, all in all, that's pretty much all I've got. We're just wrapping up those final. We'll be able to, I'll touch base with the USDA after we get that final proposal turned over. That should be in by Friday. And then we'll know a little bit more and we can turn that over. I'll kinda put you guys in touch and then be sure we've got everything, but that should be buttoned up. We'll send that off and then we can start interviewing while the USDA looks over our packet and decides what we get for surge grant.
Any questions for Ben? Alrighty, sounds good.
Alright guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good one.
Thank you. Moving on, approved honorary lease to Midwest Edge.
Yes, because this is an agricultural business, we can just slide him in. The lawyer's working on the lease. They have come back with two thousand a month. And they will do all the interior repairs. Because they're gonna make it to where those offices can be.
Utilized?
Yes, with the showers and the bathroom. So they're gonna do the water, the plumbing, the heat, and they said they don't need air conditioning. So just keep that in mind. It'll be a resolution coming up if you're okay with the dollar amount. What?
Yeah. Kinda figured it'd be the opposite, but hey, that's fine. So we need to approve that, Ben?
I just need to, need to know that you're okay with two thousand a month.
I know, but what difference would it make if the air furnace are all probably up together and they're?
Well, they're taking care of it, so this doesn't matter.
Yeah, they're gonna take care of all that. They're gonna decide what they want inside.
It's as is.
Yeah.
And then, uh, three-year lease or five-year repayment. The lawyers asking me for the documents, so then it'll be a resolution.
Three years and jump to twenty-five.
Okay, five years.
Goodness, hard merger.
Be in motion for that, Ben?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept their two thousand and make it for five years. Term lease, or, yeah, the term would be five years.
Take your second. Who knows if they come up to be something where they would buy it? Because it's still that same field, we wouldn't have the FAA issues.
As long as we don't have any.
Exactly, exactly. But we'll, we'll know more.
So we have a motion on the floor. For the second.
With a second.
Approve the honorary lease to Midwest Edge.
Yay.
On favor.
Alright, alright.
Close during now. Okay, moving on, what grade position approved?
Yep, so this is in your packets. Kellen is leaving us November first. Craig has someone in mind that has a little more experience and is further along in the education. So as long as you're okay with us posting this, we'll come back to the wage issue once we know more. But it's probably gonna be higher than where we're at. But this is the same standard that we use for all companies.
So what action do we need in here?
I need approval to post this position.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Move in second to approve the posting of your position on paper. Uh, close. Okay. And approve your, uh, to attend the annual conference League of Cities?
It'd be next Wednesday, Thursday, and part of day Friday I could be back. We will have a way to communicate between City Hall and Iowa and gone. If you guys will let me go, this is a great conference to meet people in this position that can help you.
I've been to a couple of these, it's kind of a variable. Just pay face-to-face meetings, I think you could.
Or contact.
Des Moines. I had to pay for it or the price was gonna go up, but we're still within the window to cancel.
She go.
Okay.
Motion?
I have a motion on that. I'll make a motion. Set. Second.
Good move, and second to approve, we're going to League of Nations annual conference. On paper?
Alright.
So I'm only nation, so.
Cities.
What did I say?
There's only nations.
You just got to notice.
You know what happened to League of Nations? They sunk.
They sunk.
Okay, uh, group work session for four o'clock on September twenty-second.
So this will be tip with one of our lawyers via Zoom. We need to update our urban revitalization plan if we are going to include the pool and/or the park. Because right now it just says two buildings in the local area to bring them up to look nice. But we have to amend it to add those two pieces so we can use them.
Pool and what, or the other?
Park.
So this cover all the, you know, if there are some questions on the tip prior as well, so we can.
Yep.
Cover all that.
Yeah.
Is that something you can, we can join if we're not here?
Yep.
Okay.
We can make sure everybody can get on.
Okay.
You're gonna be in the field by then.
I sure hope so.
As long as you're okay with us starting at four instead of four thirty today.
Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve that work session. Second.
Move in second to approve the work session for four o'clock on twenty-second.
Put it in your phone.
Yeah.
No, I grabbed his one.
Okay, discuss drainage at Prairie Estates.
Okay, so it's been brought to our attention that the east side of Prairie Estates, right along Golf Course and Hole Number Six, which always floods anyway, apparently there was some abandoned tile that we may or may not hit, may or may not have hit, may or may not have blocked. But when Petersons were doing their basement, there was a huge gush of water on top of all the rain that fell.
So was water coming from the west going east?
Yes, towards pond.
Okay.
And I talked to the engineers and had her send pictures and look over. The engineer swears he didn't hit anything. And the only thing we know of is abandoned tile that may have been there over a hundred years. But we won't know until we dig. And the engineers don't see any fault in what they've done. So it would be out of us to get down in there.
Well, there's nothing like their contract stuff that they have to repair any tile, cause I mean.
They don't see where they hit anything.
How do they just?
It's an abandoned, it's an abandoned tile, it's a sand.
Who distinguishes it as abandoned? Like, we have tile that runs some hard fields. We might put some plastic in and it's technically abandoned, but they can still have washouts and carry water through them.
The contractor, the one that dug, is actually still on paper, on contract until November of this year. But we have to find fault in what they've done anyways. It'll be a full charge on us again to have them come back over. Or Shones have offered eighteen thousand to go down and fix what he thinks is the problem.
So it's all in the lots or just?
All six of those on the end, and then they wanna split it with the city and those six residents.
How do they know that the tile that hit though, there's a record of it?
That's, Shones is.
And how do they know there was a gush of water? There was a lot of rain.
I know it. That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of water.
And they don't have a basement. I don't think so.
I don't think, I know.
I don't. They're doing a little bit back too about the basement.
It's not recommended, but it's not.
I mean, if the engineers designed it for the water, surface water.
Drain to the pond.
Drain. That's what it was designed to do.
And so Petersons want to.
If there was an existing tile there from the farmer.
We wouldn't know.
Well, it's not.
And it's a bank.
What's our responsibility to fix that?
That's what I'm asking you.
We're not draining the ground to grow crops, we're building houses.
Exactly. There is a way to tie into those houses and run it around the houses instead of right up to the back of it. But that's part of that eighteen thousand. And she said all six residents have been contacted and I know one is not. So I don't, I just need your direction on how and where and what you wanna do with it. Are we responsible for it? I don't think we are. But I don't.
Just without knowing to what the wording was on the, the engineer and the scope of work, you know, if it says anything about tile, what if it's field tile?
I know, cause that's a different thing.
And if you can't prove that it's a field tile.
I have thirty-eight page report that you go in there and there's one little circle that shows where they put that tile down fifteen feet deep. That's all it shows. And it looks like a little railroad track, and that's it.
On the new one?
On the new.
Yeah, no one's put tile down there fifteen feet.
Yes.
That cuts through that hill there on set.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the overflow for.
That pond.
That pond, yeah. And that's how it all ends up in six probably.
And they think they hit that one or another?
They, they don't know. They just hit something that's coming from the golf course to the pond.
But, oh, it shouldn't flow.
The one, the one on six goes east.
Yeah, it would be somewhere from west coming east.
Right.
Okay, so.
So it's not coming from, it shouldn't come from the golf course.
Okay, cause they're blaming it on sixty and so flooded and we must have backed up the tile to where it couldn't drain.
No, it floods all the time.
It floods, it's been flooding since I was a kid. And we got a lot of rain. So I don't know, I don't have enough.
Rain there in those days.
Yeah.
Cause I think at one time we even took our root, root cutter down there and started on two and come back so far. Whether it grew back, and that's been quite a while too. So whether it grew back in.
There is a history though, problem?
What do you mean?
But didn't when we dig something, didn't we tile to the north? Isn't out of that pond, doesn't it go north? We cut across that field. That doesn't cut east. So new tile would.
No, but there's a tile on six there that heads east.
That heads east, that one does. But the drainage one from the pond doesn't go east, it goes north.
Well, it goes east for a little ways.
And then north. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But I think they're worried about the old tile, aren't they?
Yes.
But we're, I just, I don't understand whether it'd be a gush, I guess, coming from the west to. I guess, I don't know. I don't know, there's no proof that there's a tile, I guess.
I know. There's no proof that we've hit anything other than all this concern over the water and it's coming from this side.
What did Shones do?
Shones has offered eighteen thousand to dig down and tie all that out so it'll go to the street and to the drains and to the pond.
There's been no exploratory digging.
No, no, no.
So we don't know if there's anything.
Cause there's no proof that it's hit, yeah. So we can table it till you guys talk to the residents or you look at the drainage papers?
But there's no, I don't know what drainage paper I'd look at. There's no drainage, there's no tile map.
That sounds like no.
So there's nothing to look at.
Isn't there a tile map at the courthouse?
I guess.
I mean, I got it from ISG.
Yeah, there might be one, but.
Maybe.
I got a thirty-eight page one from ISG, you're more than.
No, but I mean, if they're talking about an old tile map, an old tile map, if the county had something or if a farmer put it in or what, I, I don't know.
First you gotta find out which tile and if we hit something, right?
Yeah, but if they dig down and there's nothing there.
That's what I'm saying.
We shouldn't be liable for. Yeah, we don't, we don't, we shouldn't be liable for. Doing exploratory digging. Our fault.
Kinda how.
And I don't know fault's the right word because I mean, when you're an engineering company that do everything.
Cause I'm sure that's all they did is go up to the courthouse and see where the tile was.
Yeah.
Cause she wanted us to go west, well, that damn thing's overflowing.
Yeah, no.
So that's the reason that we went north. And if they said it's fifteen feet deep, wouldn't wanna hit that when they dug their basement, that they would have flooded their basement. And if they would have hit a tile.
We didn't know that.
There hasn't been nothing said that they hit it, hit an old tile when they dug their basement.
I'm trying to think of what they would have hit, uh, what would have hit a tile.
If they were to dug, when they dug their basement or their, their footings.
Yeah.
They would have hit a tile. Yeah, you think they played, they've been played. We hit a, we hit a little clay tile when we did the addition at JR or something. Rerouted it. I don't know if it was abandoned or not, so. We rerouted it, cause it was, it was in the middle of the hole.
But that, it's like, well, whoever digged the footings or something like, I don't know how that's, I guess we, I just don't know how we're at fault. If there's a tile there, they got hit, something's gotta be done, but whose fault is it?
Dug the basement. Yeah. Dug the footings.
I don't know who the builders are, but.
Because if it, if there's a tile, it's hit, somebody's gotta fix it. But I don't feel like that's on us.
And I agree, especially there's so many what ifs.
But somebody's got, somebody's at fault, but.
So first we'd have to find out if there's a tile, right?
Yep.
So who would, who would be in charge of digging down to see if there's even a tile?
Cause who'd be in charge of that?
I mean, who?
Yeah.
If it's our exploratory, or if it's Petersons, or any of those six.
They think there's a tile on their property, it's their property.
Okay, I can, okay. You guys want?
I'd just see if there's a tile map up there first and then. The guy would have.
I would just think that the engineering company would have. Probably looked at all that stuff or compiled that, but they claim that there's no, they haven't seen anything.
And she reached out to them and his response is on that email too, so.
See if there's a tile map and then if there is, we can come back to it, I guess.
Okay, so we'll table it for now?
Yeah, because I mean, you can't impede the flow of water, but we didn't impede it. It wasn't the city that did that.
Okay.
It was the contractor and everything else, so.
It's in there. Alright.
I don't know if we know who did what.
Alright, so we're gonna table.
Discuss street operation around the public elementary school.
So, um, Mr. Bowley, the new superintendent, has, of course, he'd seen some things and, and, and he had had some concerns. Uh, but most of his concern on this had come when it all started with, he was outside and since the school has put in that parking lot across the street on First Avenue Southwest, the parents are finally using it, which is what is always the hope, right? The problem is with that is that the kids were taking off across the street. You know, they see parents standing across the street, not all the parents make it over there by the time. And so he watched a little one almost get thumped on that street. Mostly his concern was because the buses that are parked along there, there were, there's the rides bus and then three buses. The problem is, is that he worries about the kids filtering in between there. So I looked at some different ways to, to fix that and worked with, um, Transportation Director, Jeff, Jeff, and, uh, we, uh, we started looking at it and it was, well, where can we fit the buses to put them all together, which would be a better option anyway. So we didn't have to worry about him hooking that corner. We didn't have to worry about that it basically leaves that First Avenue Southwest for pickup. Um, keeps it open anyway. It's actually better security wise. So that took us on to Southwest Third Street. So now, so on the west side of the elementary, which it gets put road close signs out at the morning and at the evening. Morning isn't as imperative as at the evening because the evening the buses are sitting, right? In the morning, as they come in, they drop and then they head out, um, in their little clusters. So as we were looking at it, we started having some bigger discussions about how it all works down there. Number one, we've had a slight problem with people not observing the one way. Strangely enough, all of our contacts have been with teachers. Um, it's like they just get tired or something and then all of a sudden they don't look and so. So there's some enhancements to do there, but as we were also looking at it, and what's just common, and I agree with him on that, is that normally around the school, you see one-way traffic. The concern becomes on that west side then, because now when you see the buses, they're parking double wide. And they're turning on a red set of lights at the back bus. So as people are coming down there now, you can't get down Southwest Third. But as we were also looking at it, most of our traffic is usually southbound on Southwest Third anyway. Most of the people head that way. I mean, there's some people, but if you actually sit down there and watch it and patrol it and everything, most of our vehicle traffic is so used. Because when you come out from the school, you usually come back to the north to get to the highway. Our thought process is there and, and the bigger part of this discussion with you guys is turning that into a one-way street. Turning the west side into a one-way street. The east side of the street will already be no parking during school hours. The west side of the street on that parking, it would still be gray and white, and I can't think of the gentleman's name, but there's only two houses with an alley on there. Um, obviously I would want to talk to them, but I guess right now that's why this is just discussion phase, because then as people get excited or not excited. I think it is a very good option, in my opinion, to switch this to a one-way, put a do not inter signs. Um, it helps us manage traffic, you know, cause even at the beginning of the ending school, but to have that blocked off or having that flow always one direction, then the kids always know where the traffic's coming from. Um, there would also be the request to add an additional stop sign at First Avenue Southwest and then on Southwest Third on the south side of the intersection, because now people just shoot down through there. And this would, that's would cause them to stop and add a crosswalk there. Cause when school is getting out, there's a, all of a sudden now we just have a ton of kids.
There's no way to have the buses loading that parking lot on the south then or anything, is there? And you could just.
Hey, very big.
That, and now like I said, if you get down there, there's probably twenty-five, thirty cars parked down there, so it's because, so now it's actually, I mean, the last two years. There was hardly anybody that ever parked into it now, which is good, right? And the teachers are parking in it and they're not typically parking on the street. Parents are parking up there and there to come pick their kids up at that more east entry, where they come out that side door closer to Central. I mean, it's working, but it's changed the flow down there, so. That becomes my question because. The road close signs are not always the best option and we actually need to get that put into the code where that's just an authority, right? Um, it's not authorized by the code, we just allow the school to do that and shut those road clothes. It's easy fix, but, um, it's not actually on paper anywhere that they can do that.
Why is it one-way better than the road close?
Because then it always makes the flow of traffic consistent, you know, consistent set of directions instead of. So then when there isn't, when school's going on, now we allow two-way.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden now we're blocking, so if somebody wants to come here, they could turn right into those buses. That's why, what happens if they don't see the orange sign? If you have the one-way, you have the big one, you have your one-way flags up. It just provides a better visualization, I mean, they would still road close, I mean, it's still gonna be road closed.
Whatever students say, I suppose, it's gonna be abusive, but it's hard for me to say, so it doesn't affect my flow of traffic, but.
Let's help me go on. You know, and that's why I said, I just wanna have the discussion, you guys can go out there and sit, you know, I recommend, um, morning, it's not quite as dramatic. You can see kind of what's going on, cuz we wanna have a crosswalk between the parking lot and the school. Um, all that's pretty simple to do, you know, it's then when we start ma- manipulating flows of traffic is where. So like I said, if you, if you have time and at three o'clock, um, you know, usually we try to get an officer there if we're not, we're not busy, um, obviously.
No way to park the truck, like the school buses on the south side, even on the street on the one-way there.
Not all the way down, cuz it's, that's jam packed, and then our problem with parking on the south is the kids coming between the buses and the traffic's still going that way. So what it does is it just improves that on the west side. Plus then when people are coming from games and everything else, instead of having to worry about that and then kids cross, I don't know, there's some times where we've had problems with that. Where then, you know, they'll release something in the evening and then there's this floor of people and then again, we're having problems.
So which way would you make it when you have a decision?
Northbound. Cuz that's where the buses are already, the buses.
So you're gonna be able to pull up the highway and go south.
Right. So, um, that would be the request. So we can continue the discussion, but I just wanted to open that up and then again, so you guys can actually go. I was gonna take pictures and stuff and like, it's just better, take some time.
Do parking lot needs a little work.
Yes.
Not really a set entrance and.
Right.
Then there's a tree in the middle of the two.
We've talked to Jeff about that, they're working through that with the school to remove those trees and do all these things. Yeah, so.
Does that now they use, become an issue?
It hasn't until now and most parents don't even realize the alley's there, I mean, that's where it's been, some of it has been notifying, they're like. Well, now they're coming on the streets, so dangerous, like, well, why didn't you use the alley, and they're like, what alley?
You can make that parking lot one-way.
Right.
Enter from the street and exit through the alley or something.
Right.
Keep, keep people coming back onto the street.
Right. And, and that solves our, uh, helps our south side, but my west side is still my. So the bigger action is that, yeah, we're, we're dancing, so the school's trying to make their plans too on how to deal, improve that parking lot. Cuz we're even talking about where they do, where they do standard parking on the, on the sides. And then that inner row is basically somehow marked off, so people just pull through and park, park. You know, un, kind of an unloading point for kids or loading some kids, using the center of it, cuz then they can just go whichever way they wanna go. I mean, cuz they're always going one-way too, but I agree, I mean, and they, you know, Jeff can agree, I mean, he agrees and Mr. Bowley was. Would like to see, whatever we can do would be great, so.
So is that alleyway then to the south of that parking lot? Need to put like rock on so that people really know that's an alleyway or?
It's actually in pretty good shape. I mean, it's really.
Alleyway and downs, I just.
Yeah, no, it's actually in pretty good shape, I mean, it's probably one of our best alleys in, in my opinion, as far as overall gravel and stuff, so.
Trees can maybe be trimmed along.
Right.
Couple of.
It is a little tight on that, especially at the entrance exit on the west side. You know.
Let, let you make that alley one-way too.
Right. But, and, and like you said, and so and then the other, no, like on the north side of the high school, we wouldn't need to make second alley, because again, they have the roundabout, right? They have, we have ways to deal with that, and the only thing that dumps on the north side is Lorenz right now. And I know that's been in discussion too, that Lorenz school buses start coming into the roundabout instead of using the north side, but it hasn't been a problem yet. We don't have kids running across the street or anything.
So all, all the buses load at that entry now enough high school? At the high school at one time?
So yeah, so the only thing loading into high school is Lorenz buses, on the north side. I believe, I know they were talking about changing, I, after school, I'm usually at that entry, so I have a man up there to see if that change should occur. Again, just for discussion, just wanted you guys to get a chance to kind of go look at it and see what kind of pluses and minuses, I know. Like you said, to even do it down there, it really doesn't affect the residents that much, they're just gonna face a different direction, right? You know, like the people on First Avenue Southwest already have to do, I mean, they're always stuck in a, kind of in a line. You know, and luckily it'll be only for when during the road closes, I mean, as far as access points close before. So yeah.
What's your reaction on that then, with this one? Take a look. Okay, seeing on. Discussion on, what, chapter fifty-five? Of our animal protection and control, chickens and city limits.
As far as writing you guys an ordinance, it has been a horrible two weeks. Uh, we have been slam busy, so I didn't get anything typed up for this meeting for that, so. I see there was some, someone had signed some stuff in the packet, but. That's the only, that's, so that's the reason why you don't have any in front of you, cuz I just got too busy.
It should be right after your journey and job position.
What do we have to discuss next if we're not voting on any of the questions?
I think we're to the vote.
We gotta have an ordinance in front of this vote on.
Well, okay.
But we can't, I mean, you can't, uh, until you have then what's written word in front of it, so.
Okay, so this is gonna be tabled again?
Do we vote on if we're going to?
Change?
Continue.
Pursue writing an ordinance?
You could.
Yeah.
Or like you just vote on the wording of that section seven or how we want it in the ordinance? Cuz I feel like that's kind of a drug out, people are coming to put it off.
Fourth week now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would keep it, my opinion would be to keep it the way it states in this, where livestock is including poultry, that means that livestock's not allowed in city limits.
Who brought this in?
It says up the top, they don't have time.
Oh, okay.
So you're making a motion to?
No, I'm just, that's what, I'm wanting to discuss it.
Okay.
My opinion.
Okay.
It could be discussed or studied, but I would like to keep it, the wording that it says, says here, where livestock and, you know, is prohibited and include poultry.
Listen to me, I'll see chicken.
And I'll agree with you, and I just don't believe they belong in town. Keep it as is.
I agree with you. So can I make a motion then on that to leave that part of the ordinance as is?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, in chapter fifty-five here, to keep fifty-five, section seven, the way it is, where livestock pertains to poultry as well. I'll second.
It's moved in second. On the poultry as stated in. Chapter seven or, or chapter twenty-five.
Fifty-five.
On section seven.
There you go.
All favor. Close?
Aye.
So that's it? Hey, that's the whole discussion, like, just because this guy says he wants to keep it the same from nineteen eighty-something. I mean, can we get with the times a little bit? I mean, I got over five hundred signatures here of people that do not have a problem with chicken and poultry in town. I mean, there's absolutely no reason to deny poultry in town. You guys are saying because of noise and because of smell. Okay, let's look at noise. Normal conversation is sixty decibels. Traffic on a busy street is seventy to eighty-five decibels. A barking dog is ninety plus decibels. A hen clucking, sixty to sixty-five. I have plenty of videos on my phone from my backyard where I'm standing with my window open and my chickens. And then you have the neighbors over here playing football going, oh my god, I fucking had that! And then you got dogs bark and you got five of them, at least at a fence yard over here, and then you got noise complaints over here. And this guy says a rooster will eventually get in and I'll get a call.
Well, we will.
Well, I didn't know I could call you, can I get your number after the meeting so I can call you? When this dog over here is barking at me when all I'm trying to do is let my trash out?
I'm saying the city hall will get calls and it's gonna come back to us. With a rooster calling at five o'clock in the morning.
So a rooster gets in, you call it. End of story.
I think our discussion has taken place and the action has been. Discussion was closed. Okay, let's.
Yeah, I've been here for.
I'm just talking to her.
I've been here four weeks of conducting.
You guys can continue, we're having a conversation, a lot of people outside conversations.
Okay, uh, discuss city ordinances.
Okay, so again, we went through our ones from the last time, the, the fifties and whatnot, um. Let me know if you have any updates or anything you wanna change there, like you said, I apologize for not getting anything caught up, but it's been a couple of weeks, so. Um, we'll start in, this one will go relatively fast, cuz most of this is rates and things like that. Um, sewer system connections and things that, I mean, they're pretty much standard and, and again, we probably should have, at some point, just have the guys. You know, in each of those departments kind of take a look at it to make sure it's modernized. But for the most part, we'll go through it relatively quick, so. Um, chapter ninety. Ninety-one, ninety-two is water rates. Um. Ninety-three, uh, water supply protection, which can give you rules. Uh, ninety-five, sanitary sewer and how all that and how the connections are supposed to be taken care of. Um, ninety-six. You know.
Excuse me just a sec, but changing the water rates here. How is that done?
So that's done by ordinance, so when the council wants to give a three percent or set all that stuff, then you just do an ordinance that changes that section.
And that changes the numbers here for me.
And we've done it.
Yeah, but I mean, we could adjust how we want to, right?
Right, but it has to be through ordinance.
And then it update, then it updates the code.
And then it updates the code, we just add it into the book. Yeah, so, but it's like water rates, power rates, sewer rates all have to be done, are all ordinances, so, and then they get input into the book.
So it's just a matter of scratching out two, but not a four.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, so yeah, not, so nothing too big there. Um. Ninety-seven, again, um. What's, gets interesting in, just a little bit, make sure, you know, restricted discharges, which are pretty much standard under ninety-seven oh four. Um. But just so you guys are aware, the, that, I don't know, that's one that I need to confirm and make sure none of that has changed, but I think that, that's a big one for me. On-site wastewater systems, ninety-eight. Again, if you didn't realize this is where it was at, this is, this is all of that, and then sewer use. One oh five, solid waste control, this is actually the one that also talks about, um. Gives you your definitions of what solid waste, how we pick things up. One oh five point oh five, open burning restricted, says that the city of Pocahantas does not allow open burning other than in fire pits. Um, obviously you cannot burn, um, actual, like, and they call it landscape waste, remember, that's different, that's natural, right? It doesn't mean that we get to burn like cut wood from trees that have been treated. Um, but that's where, uh, this one is, and again, as you'll see that it prohibits. Uh, or it only allows open burning of landscape waste, trees, leaves, all that other stuff, from April first to May thirty-first and October first to November thirty. Um, the city council can obviously, as it says in there, allow, but that's just one to think about. Some cities, it's open, some cities, like Pocahantas, it's two times a year when it's open. We get some violations, most of our violations are people with burn barrels that are still burning, uh. Their garbage, like, instead of putting it in the trash, they're burning their garbage, and so that's what we get a primary on.
Are those considered burn pits?
Burn barrel is not considered burn pit, burn pits are actually defined in here somewhere too, so. Um, but a burn pit is usually, like I said, for recreational use only, burn barrel, I guess, you could try to argue that.
But it's supposed to be so you're not burning your garbage.
Right, exactly, exactly. Um, and it gives a good long list, pesticide containers, does allow for training fires. Trees and tree trimming. Um, it talks about where that should be taken, I guess that's one, open trees and tree trimmings at city operated burning site providing such burnings connected in compliance with the DNR. You know, that's also, if you ever wanted to then even legislate the rules even farther, I mean, I know that's been a discussion in the past. That's actually where you would, could put it, you know, not only just as a motion, you could change your ordinance to say, in the ordinance. This place is prohibited from this, that's how you would do it, and then it would become enforceable. So, just so you guys are aware. Uh. One oh five, oh wait, that's when I jumped, so sanitary disposal required, I don't know if most residents realize that. But again, if you leave your trash, and I've got a couple that I've got, I'm working on, um. Again, you have to, if you have, you leave your trash outside, you have thirty days to clear it out, you can only accumulate up to thirty days of trash, so, outside. Then you have to dispose of it. Well, yeah, and you see, I mean. Some of the houses I've been into this weekend. Um, one oh five eight, open dumping, just, this is again where we talk about. Um, solid waste on the ground and on, to any body or stream of water. Um, rubble means dirt, stones, so again, people throwing rocks and stuff into the, the dredge by the park, that is against the law, just everybody knows. Um. That's a, that's a no-go. One thing I did find interesting is, and not to bring up those, those points, but one oh five ten, it does require you to have a waste storage container. Requires you to have a trash can. The city code requires it, but. Once they switch to bags, again, some of those things that we don't think about, but whatever needs to come about, whenever those, you know, that needs to be updated to whatever the current practice is. It's just one that just residually got left. Um, prohibited practices, of course, uh, one oh five eleven, unlawful use of containers. Um, that's where, again, you legally dump your trash into someone else's container. Um. If you interfere with the picking up of waste. Scavenging, that's one where we're dumpster diving. We've had a few of that issues, um. One oh six just talks about how then you can, uh, your, uh, frequency of collection, your garbage rates. Leans for non-payment. One ten is the natural gas franchise. Like you said, not a lot, electric utility, again, one eleven. One twelve, your service lines, and then we're back into codes that actually have some different things. So this again is just basically free stating Iowa code chapter one twenty-three. Um. Talking about, so like if there is, a needs to be an investigation on the license, so let's say you guys want it, it's empowered to the police chief. But for the most part, this supports, uh, and is just a recap of one twenty, Iowa code one twenty-three, so there's, it usually just follows that. Um, and it does include a, actually a gambling section on amusement devices.
Say back to chap one, one eleven, like the electric rates on there, is that up to date?
This, the one that you have is up. That just needs to be, when I, when we put all the book together, when I put it back together, then.
It's like those are all in the twenty sixteen.
Uh, one twenty-one, cigarette tobacco permits, again, same kind of thought process. Again, it does have the person under legal age. Um, no person shall sell otherwise give. We usually do because, um, I've been the tobacco compliance inspector for Pocahontas County since two thousand and seven. I don't know how I finagled that job, but I've basically done all the look permits up to the point in, in the entire county. But it's a contract and then they pay us, I think they're paying us, I think it's seventy-five or more now, uh, to go do that. And then I just turn that money into the city and then just come back as income to the city for us coming out and doing those checks. But it's, again, tough to find agencies that are willing to do it. Just talk about how you can revert their permit. An interesting one came up on the peddler's license, there's some questions on that. You know, different towns do different things. Pocahontas's peddler permit is, is extremely expensive as compared to most, I'm not saying we change it or we don't change it. But just something to think about, it's what, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I think, with all the service fees and stuff, if you want to peddle in Pocahontas.
As for any occasions, do you?
We've had, I mean, I don't know if we had any this year.
I filled out one.
We don't get a lot.
A year or so ago, somebody looks.
Yeah, we had the, the, that one, they sell those encyclopedias or whatever.
Food trucks?
Food trucks fall under, I believe, a different theory, I would have to look. That's a good, I don't deal with food trucks, so I'm not.
All the same, and door to door.
Right, so if you're actually.
Food truck are going to it, so.
Right, I mean, and there, it does talk about that, but normally, like I said, when you talk about like your rag brey ordinances. You know, rag brey usually has the, the merchant, the food trucks. Usually this is more of, in my experience, than just for door-to-door sales, you know? And it has to be sales, that's where, that's where it gets to be interesting too, is that a lot of times you'll have these peddlers come up and they won't sell you anything. They'll just provide you with information, would you like to make an improvement? That is technically not peddling, as long as they're not selling. Yes, if they sell it, then, they, or that they offer something for sale.
Is there like an exception for like kids that are doing?
There actually is, on one twenty-two point one nine, absolutely there is. Newspaper, club members, local residents and farmers who offer for sale, so farmers markets are legal. Pocahontas area community school district, um, conducting, and actually that probably should include the Catholic school, which I just now noticed in reading that. Um, root sales, which was, uh, Schwanz was the big root sales one, which was legitimate. And then, like I said, reseller and sensational use. So like if they're coming to city hall and selling their cleaning supplies.
The fish peddler comes in, he's okay.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and then they talk about exceptions for charitable and nonprofits. Um, house movers, we did have this a little bit, and I had to use this a little bit this year, uh, with the removal of one house. We actually worked it out, our bigger concern was, wouldn't the house hit the state highway, which becomes a huge problem. For the most part, when I got involved, it was just to make sure they understood their roots and that, if they chose that they were going to move it and give five minutes notice and then we had to move cars, that was not going to occur. So, the big reason obviously to get this, besides the insurance, is the fact that you're gonna move it, that way nothing gets damaged. And we make sure that the tree clearance is there, and while we don't have a lot of power lines, again, at the parade for heritage days, we had a communication line in one of the parade floats, so, I didn't know about that, as a matter of fact, so. Yeah, so, you know, so again, it's just to make sure those kind of, and they talk about.
I thought you were walking, how did you?
True, uh, one twenty-four motel, hotel tax, um, one thirty-five, uh, street use maintenance. This is the one that talks about if we remove, um, barriers and one of the things that again, we need to, and I, we did, I talked to about, you know, our barrier, I think it was Jonathan, wasn't it, we talked about barriers and stuff too, like road close signs.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're, we're pretty rough and it's one of those things that I, I, I just need to take some time and sit down with Dave. You know, the city may need to start looking to invest in some, like, road closed stuff, we're not closing streets with just cones. It becomes problematic.
Oh, and yellow tape does not count.
And, and yellow tape does not count, and so.
That kind of falls on the contractor.
Well, and there was some of that, I did enjoy that though, it was, I thought that was pretty unique. At least they read it, try to read it, correct, that whole point. But there have been, like I said, so when we have some of the events, and I'm not saying we have to go crazy with a whole bunch of, but we need to, you know, the candlesticks and stuff are fairly enough, in my opinion, if somebody decided to come through that. Well, I thought I could get.
Don't buy, you put up a sign, I was driving around, I had a sign analyzed.
Yeah, I've never seen that either. But then they talk about like putting, uh, uh, placing debris, placing debris on, uh, playing in the street, you can't play in the streets. As far as co-sled or play games on streets or alleys except that are blocked off by the city, if you didn't realize that. Obviously, kind of a littering thing. If we do shut it down, a street down, and that's the reason why, especially you guys, when the city council orders a street closed, that allows for one thirty-five point oh five to occur because you guys have authorized that street to be officially closed. Don't wash your vehicles on the streets unless, there's a whole, um, it is unlawful for anyone to, public sidewalk, street or alley or purpose of washing or cleaning any automobile truck. Any kind on such hire for business, this does not prevent any person from washing or cleaning his own vehicle or equipment. But you cannot hire out and do it.
So you can't have a cheerleader car wash?
We could make an exception, on the street, on the street. You can have it up in your yard if you want. Burning prohibited, we do get that, especially in the fall where we'll have to tell people, again, burning leaves in the alley, but they'll put it right in the center of the alley and it's like, I'm sorry you want your grass to look well, but you can't burn.
Yeah, it's gonna die in a month anyway, so.
They talk about then rules on excavations, this is also where we get into the maintenance of, uh, parking or terr- of the terrace, you know, into that curb line to sidewalk. And again, where I point out, remember that we do need to get into the habits of now making sure people are compliant with keeping those areas clear. Because again, it can get us in trouble if we're not notifying people of problems. Um, they talk about the dumping of snow. Throw push, place cause would be thrown or any ice or snow from private property onto traveled waste street has to obstruct gutters or impede the passage of vehicles. I don't interpret this as saying you can't push it across. It just means you can't leave big rolls of it, so like, you know, when you clean out your driveway, and of course, there's, especially when there's a ton of snow, you can get it to the other side, but you gotta clean the street. So that's the way I interpret that, um, to me, that's a common sense way to look at it.
Can you put it to the other side in somebody else's yard?
No, you can only put it up.
Unless you give them.
I'm just asking. There's a lot of snow in them, so.
They talk about driveway culverts, um, this one, this one always is an interesting one, tractor trailer, instead of putting this in the parking section, they put this in here. So this only allows semi-parking on city streets for four hours.
I thought it was forty-eight.
And this is one that I think I want everybody to really put, because I'll be honest with you, again, it's just like chickens and everything else, I'm not invested in it. One of the things that we did in Fonda, because we had restrictions, I mean, Fonda had everything load limited, right? We did not allow, and it was, I, they wanted me to be aggressive on it, we don't want semis. But they didn't mind the power unit, right? So if you take the power unit of the semi and you pull it on the street, we didn't really, I mean, someone coming to their house and parking on the street, that was one thing that was okay. Obviously, once we have the trailer and all that other stuff operating on those streets, how do we want to do that? Because this one has been problematic for me, because it allows it in some cases, but I agree. There are some people that do believe it's forty-eight hours, so we have not, unless there's been a directed complaint on it, I don't, you know. Or it's blocking visibility or it's doing those things.
Because we had an issue with that before and I thought we allowed, especially, it's like for the weekend trucker comes home.
And that's one reason why my understanding is, is that, why the pool parking area is there.
Right.
People could come and dump their, drop their trailer there and then drive their power unit home.
Which it probably could have been discussed and talked about and never got.
Well, I thought that's what we, loaded on, because.
It never got anything updated in the book.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, they gotta drop the trailer there. And then they said, well, how are we gonna get there? We gotta drive on the street. Oh, yeah, you do.
Right.
But I thought there was, if you were coming from on four, you had to take Fourth Avenue, I believe. And if you were going, coming in on three either way. I think it was First Street. First Street.
I've, and I've had people tell me that, I just don't, I've never had anything in writing, that's, you know, I mean, that's never come to me, so I don't know.
I thought you had a word in something like that.
So, so that would be our, my only concern, I mean, and we can get it fixed this time, I mean, make sure exactly what you guys wanted to have.
Drop the trailer, you would have your power, you didn't have home for forty-eight hours.
What meeting, what meeting did you discuss that?
I don't remember what year it was.
Knock the dust off, it'll be.
And like, and in this case on this, as far as trailer goes, the, actually the city administrator does have the authority to grant specific assumptions for that moment or whatever. I do recommend that we, like in that case, we put in writing, that we make sure any time that there is an exception to something though, they have to have something in writing from the authority saying that this is done, because obviously that's where we get ourselves into trouble too. Well, I've always had the ability to do this. Where do we have that at? Sidewalk regulations, that's always a fun one in small towns, I won't spend a lot of time on it, it talks about if you have a sidewalk, you need to clear it off. I'm not gonna get into all that, just, because we have some places to do, some places we don't. You just tell me what you want done and I do it, so I, I don't get into this, some towns are more aggressive than others. And it talks about how you have your sidewalks and put that in, and another one for debris on sidewalks, which I don't know, awnings, few of them. One thirty-seven is just how you evacuate a street and it talks about how you, you know, and then this is the section that's supposed to have all those in there of all the streets that you guys have said are no longer streets. The grading of, the naming of, and then one forty was just, um, the important one, of course, and it's not. Yes. So. Yeah, and that's just, and it shows you where, where those are at. Sticks to this, you know, and I love, you know, the technical nature of those. And then, it's also then they end there, in the end, they talk about then parking restricted as well, so, um, a couple of the things that they, part of the modifications too, is that like, a lot of code books will enumerate, like, what are your one-way streets? And they put it in the ordinance, which I think is a fair thing to do. So like the alley by the post office should be one-way, you know, but there's nothing in the code that says it is. Doesn't mean we can't put up the sign and make it that way, it just makes it.
Is the alley really not one-way though, is it? It's just do not enter.
No, it's actually got a one-way sign. Uh, should be right there on the board, right, I, I think, yeah. There's a do not enter, and I think there's a one-way sign right on the right side. I think, I think so. You're, you're gonna make me question it now because.
No, I just. There's do not enter at the door, but that meaning you're not enter.
So some of that stuff, like you said, and those are just some of the things that need to come.
Can you go south, once you come down there?
And then I noticed that the state has removed two of our snow ban parking signs from their signs because they faded out so bad that they haven't been replaced, so we're gonna have to do something with that. But they just replaced their speed limit signs and then took our signs down, so I've got two, two directions into town right now that don't have snow parking. So, yeah, so. We'll definitely do the truck parking one, we'll work through that one, and if, you said, any of the other ones you wanna go through, I'll be.
Have we been to trees yet?
I know, and, and that's where some of this, it gets to be a little weird too, it's like, when I go to look for parking. You know, so I've got some parking here and then I've got some parking here and then, you know, burning here, but then burning there, and that's where it's a little confusing. I don't know about going and changing it all, it's just tough to find sometimes. So, uh, just been an extremely busy two weeks, follow-up fact is here, um, guys have all been working super hard. Got a lot of sad cases, I guess is what I would call, um, a lot of mental health, which is typical this time of year. Of two big notes, so I've got one in the chute for Lorenz, he just has to pass the PT test and Lorenz will have one iron. No background issues, no nothing, it's just a mental health agility. I did have one higher to come onto this agenda and, uh, because of some time limit stuff, she, uh, the academy agreed to give her a test and she failed, so she's out for now, so we'll see how that goes. Although I still have.
For Poki or Renz?
For Poki. So I still have another one in there, but again, he was the one that was injured at boot camp, um, so he's not, he's the best.
She can retake, correct?
She cannot retake because she's up against what's called the year limit. So she had worked for another agency, she didn't like that agency, she had left. She comes here, then becomes the problem of, September twenty-third is her last day. Otherwise, she has to be out a year. So if you don't, if you don't go to the academy within a year, you're done for a year. I mean, then that's, I mean, and it's a hard, hard and fast rule. So, actually, the academy had done us a favor and said that for my higher test and foregoing, there was, there's an academy class starting September twenty-second. They agreed because they have to be able to certify her for that, um, that they would do a test for, so she did it on Friday. Yep, yep, I can pass.
She didn't.
So.
Was it the run?
Yeah. She was off. So, um, I'm still working with her, uh, I mean, I'm trying to support her through, she's gonna have to now apply for waivers and stuff. But I can't do any hiring until she passes that run. So, um, had a long academy, talk with her today and had a lot of talk with the academy today, I mean, it all depends, it's all gonna be up to the academy council. What they agree, if they're gonna give her, you can only get one one-hundred-and-eighty-day extension and it's on her right now, because she's not hired by us. How's that all going with Lorenz? Good. Really haven't had a lot of problems, uh, they've been super responsive. Residents, I don't know, again, I'm, I'm, people might say I'm biased, have the night guide, what do you think, Josh?
Nothing happens much on my nights.
I mean, that's the thing is, I mean, if I could even tell you guys is that this has been such a huge change in the last couple of years. Our night shifts were always just crazy.
Well, but I just, even for the whole county though, because even the, the county guys were just talking about how this has been a really weird summer. It's not been a normal summer, so like, it's just hard to say. Like, most of my calls are Lorenz, more than Poki, like Poki from yet night's been almost nothing. Like, the worst thing that I think I had is after we had our city celebration, that was like the worst time, alcohol gets involved. But, um, Poki's been extremely quiet for my nights.
I mean, I'm the one on Saturday morning that gets a nine-one-one hangup and there's a fight in the middle of the street at seven-thirty in the morning. I'm like, what in the world? I mean, and that's just been constant, and again, and a lot of our mental health are presenting.
I was gonna say, it's either medical calls or mental health, or a majority of it.
Nobody applied for Lorenz yet?
No, so I have one.
I have one?
Yeah, and he is actually, he's an awesome candidate, so I'm, again, he just has to get, he, quick real story on it was, is that Eric and I just happened to go up there, they had a paranoid schizophrenic really losing it and we called the guy, de-escalated. And this guy comes out of, uh, Dollar General up there with his family and we just start talking and I said, well, yeah, you know, why don't you just join the police department? And suddenly he looks at his wife and is like, and he'd been talking about it, he's, he's older, um, a lot of life experience, like I said, no background issues, always been responsible. He's like, no, I wanna be a cop, he's already got a house, been living in Lorenz for many a month.
So he's got to go through the academy and everything?
So he would still have the academy and he would have to go to a long course because he doesn't have, his degrees aren't in law enforcement, there is, other business and stuff, but again, honestly, that diversity helps, so I mean, I talk to him every couple of days, I mean, he's.
So realistically, how long is it until he is putting on a uniform and traveling or whatever?
I hope in the next thirty days, but, I don't know, again, it's that run.
Yeah, okay.
It's the, it's the, he can do the push-ups and sit-ups without a problem, it's, it's that run, it just gets everybody, and again, it's, it's a hard and fast rule because you don't wanna send people. you don't wanna send people down on the fan, so, and in case it was my one and she didn't, so, I mean, I didn't test her either, so. No, so super good dude, would really help to have someone up there, like you said, I think everybody, I mean, this guy is extremely square.
Further discussion? Oh, we're on an important.
Yes.
No?
You are recording this meeting on your, because you are going to.
Oh. I'm gonna be working on the minutes and, um, be doing that each.
And this is how they say to train, is to record the meeting, so he doesn't have to just hear your voices and maybe not know who said what, he'll actually have it on the phone. So, he's moving along. Casey's doing fine, she hit her ninety days, you're about to hit your year. I'm gonna go to League of Cities, I do just happen to have a doctor's appointment the day before I go. So, and I can't drive, so I'll be gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to Des Moines, Tuesday I'll be going to the doctor, just so you know. But I will be in touch all the time. Then June.
I guess nothing at this time.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, I got one question, uh, which is a big topic anymore, people have been coming to me about the trash, the blue bags. Our garbage guys are only picking up what's put in blue bags, right? They're not taking, they're not taking, right, they're not taking garbage that just has a bag tied to the can. You wanna make sure, that's, you wanna make sure of that?
There can be a can, there can be a bag tied to the can.
They have to be in the bag.
As long as what's in the can will fit in the bag. If there's more in the can than what will go in the bag.
So how do we know what fits in the bag?
They're taking the blue bag off the can every time.
They take it off the can every time. And they fill it and then they go.
So is that, is that a rule that they can tie it to the can?
No.
Or is that just what we're allowed?
We just discussed, there's nothing in the code, so.
Codes don't require containers, so.
They're allowing it at this point unless it's overflowed.
I just wanna bring it up because there's a lot of people that, not a lot of people.
Get those rules written out, soon it put in the code.
You betcha.
Cause, uh, some people are mad because they put theirs in a blue bag or a yellow bag, whatever it is, the others are not.
It should be in the bag.
So I can just tie a blue bag in my garbage and it will take it, is what I'm being told, right?
As long as it fits in the blue bag, if it's more than what goes in that blue bag, they will not.
Okay, I'll be tied to two bags. Okay, I'm just saying, that's, somebody's gonna ask that.
Oh, it's already happened.
I, yeah, so I think we need to get that.
What is the distinguished sooner thing?
Cause what they have in the can has to fit in the bag.
In one bag.
And if they put two bags in, it's gotta fit in two bags.
Okay, I just don't know why we just don't have it in a bag.
Yes, I would agree with that.
I didn't hear you, what did you say?
I don't know why we just don't have it, it has to be in a blue bag or a yellow bag.
It has to be, it should really be.
Okay, I just wanna bring that up.
Work on that to get it in the.
That's the recycling.
Sooner than later.
People need to recycle, is what it comes down to. We are the highest in the county for our tonnage and for what we pay a month on our garbage. We pay over eleven thousand a month to take our garbage to the places we have to take it.
Okay, so like, our recycling's an issue and, you know, those, those recycling bins that they put out, cause, you know, you have to recycle and.
No, you can't just recycle, no.
I understand that, well, like other towns, sometimes they have those green trailer recycling receptacles where it's partitioned out different things to. It's like that up there, but I don't know if that, if people just don't realize they can recycle up there, if it's not.
We need to put more out.
You know, there's just, like, you pull up there and you kinda see the cardboard, but the rest is kinda.
Yeah, cause it's plastic, carry things.
Yeah, and we're still at that, where you don't have to separate your stuff for curb pickup. Correct. They're still doing that.
What do you mean? If it's in a yellow or a blue bag, they're gonna.
For recycling.
For recycling, people usually put their cans.
You don't have to, last I know, they were just, they were just putting it all together.
As long as it's recycled, it can be, yes.
So then the garbage station has to sort it?
Nope, they don't have to sort it, they just take it over to.
Recycle is recycle.
So you can throw the glass in with the cans?
You can throw it all together.
Yeah. It's sorted at store.
And it's sorted all the same. Because.
Sometimes I just don't feel like people really.
But they, they do not take what's at the recycle, they keep that all separate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They just basically have a truck, once a month they take over.
Yeah.
Cause they don't, cause they don't pick up much off the curb.
I didn't know that either, so that might be information that we should get out there.
Yeah.
I thought you had to have it.
So you, so you could get a can and throw all your recycling. I feel like that's something like on the social media side, I know social media cover everything, but it wouldn't hurt for, like, the city of Pocahontas to make a Facebook post about just like a recommendation on, you know, how those yellow bags are used or blue bags. We get it written up and, and get recycling in there too.
Yeah, yeah.
Needs to be taken, it needs to be taken to the pot, essentially.
If it's gonna go there, they need to make sure they go there on the weekends and move it so you can open the door.
Yes, yes.
Cause you go there every Sunday and it's completely full.
You have to jam.
Takes five minutes to move it. And if they do it on Fridays, on Fridays, they don't do it either.
Chad will go down there and then it if you tell him.
So then on the complaint side of things too, then, you know, I have people that approach me, complain, and I would bring it up on my time, but if somebody did, they'd call City Hall? Is there a formal, is that the formal way to do it, is to call or email City Hall and then it'll get brought up?
Yeah, formal request.
Yeah.
Yep, there's an actual form that they need to fill out, so we have their information and we can follow up with it.
Is there a digital copy of that that people can access or?
I can put it out there.
Yeah.
It's got twenty sixteen on it, so we can take a minute.
But they can still come and talk to us.
Oh, you bet, yeah, 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 my door is always open. Okay, now.
I don't have it there.
Okay. Anywhere for now?
It's removed.
Not yet.
Cool, we're closing.
Oh.
It's still going to close, sir.
It's like, I didn't know where that was.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you, everybody.